All right, folks, let's go and call the Committee of the Whole Meeting for September 26 to order. Let the record reflect the starting time of 5:30. With that, Clerk Bullock, would you please take the role?
Councilmember Hussein?
Here.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Here.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Here.
Councilmember Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels? Seven members present, you have a quorum of the committee.
All right, just for the record, we did get a message from Mr. Daniels a couple hours ago. Sounds like he's struggling with maybe the stomach flu, so he did ask to be excused for tonight. With that, if, oh, I'm sorry, we are on Agenda Item 3, meeting minutes from September 12, 2022. Vice President Wood?
Thank you, President Hussein. At this time, I would move the minutes of September 12 as written.
All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. That takes us to public comment on agenda items. There are a few agenda items. We do have a resolution that pertains to outside counsel. We also have a resolution to adopt our fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget priorities. And then we also have listed on the agenda a closed session. So with that, on a first-come, first-served basis, there are folks in the gathering that would wish to make public comment. We will give you up to three minutes, and we simply ask that you state your first and name, I'm sorry, first and last name for the record.
I'm assuming I can comment on items under the litigation?
Yes.
Okay. The Charter Township versus Lansing for the annexation issue, I think that if you're in there negotiating or talking about negotiating, you ought to just give that one up. Quit wasting our time, our money, on fighting something that isn't in the best interest of the citizens of the city or of the township. The annexation, the way it was proposed by the city, would disenfranchise the voters in Lansing Township, who would be stuck with an unusual amount of tax compared to what they're already stuck with. And it would also burden the citizens of Lansing after an X number of years, I think it was three years or whatever, that the mayor had said we would reimburse the township for their loss in taxes. So, you know, even if it works out that there's a plus-minus balance there at first, there's no guarantee that'll hold in the future. So you're potentially endetting the citizens of Lansing into the future for who knows how many years. There's no guarantee on what would happen with the township and its taxes. They think they may be able to resolve some of their issues within a short time, like six months or so, in which case the citizens who voted for the annexation may find that they wished they hadn't, and it's irreversible at that point in time. The numbers already have come in higher once than were first predicted at what it would cost the citizens of Lansing. So I say, you know, there's no guarantees. Nobody can read into the future. It's a waste of our time and money and effort to continue to fight that, so I hope you drop it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others wishing to make public comment? Going once, going twice. All right, we're going to move on to discussion action item five. This is a resolution for the approval of the addition of Salvatore Prescott Porter &amp; Porter, PLLC, to outside legal counsel. You might remember earlier in the year, we actually approved as a body resolution 2022-197. That was a resolution that was introduced by Councilman Spatafor, and it dealt with reproductive rights. Primarily, the ask was to the state legislature to repeal the ban on the 1931 abortion statute, sorry. But in any event, in that resolution, there was actually a bit further resolved where we encouraged the administration to review and sign the amicus brief filed in connection with the Planned Parenthood of Michigan versus Attorney General of the State of Michigan. We thought at that time, at least this is my understanding, we thought at the time in terms of approving that language in the resolution, that that actually gave our mayor the ability to move forward and then sign that amicus brief after review. However, our understanding is that we actually took a look at the documents, and we realized that we actually have to put Salvatore Prescott Porter &amp; Porter basically on a retainer. So what they're going to do, they're actually acting on a pro bono basis. They've actually already put together the amicus brief on behalf of Washtenaw County, as well as Ann Arbor, I believe it is. And so, in order for us to actually move forward and to have Lansing sign off, we have to actually add them to the outside counsel list, so that our mayor can then move forward and actually sign the amicus brief. With that, Jim, if you have anything to add before we actually move forward?
No, you've actually stated it correctly.
Okay.
Not actually, you have stated it actually.
Yep. And then the other piece is, there is some urgency. Again, we thought, there was a little bit of a hiccup. We thought we were actually, by approving that resolution, giving the administration permission, and we thought we were within our purview to do so. So you'll notice, because they want to get this filed as quickly as possible, you'll notice that as part of counsel, tonight, we're actually taking this through the entire process. So we will actually vote on this, and then during the referral process, it will actually be placed on file. Okay? So with that, first, we'll take a motion, and then we'll open up for discussion. Vice President Wood?
Thank you, President Hussein. I would move the resolution to approve the addition of Salvatore Prescott Porter &amp; Porter, PLLC, to the outside legal counsel list.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. Councilman Spitzley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. So, I just have a question for our city attorney. I'm trying to figure out, so we, in order for us to file an amicus brief, we have to bring these folks on as attorneys? So why is that?
There are, because no, your charter provides that we have to come to you for representation on any litigation. And we've done that in the past, historically, by preparing this list that you approve. They are filing a legal brief in a case.
Right.
It's an active litigation. They want the City of Lansing to join in that. So they're being our attorney for the purpose of that brief.
Well, I thought, okay, and I appreciate that. Thank you. So, we're not filing an amicus brief anymore? We're joining the litigation?
Yes. Yes. Joining the amicus brief that's being filed. Signing onto the brief.
Okay. And, all right, and so Salvador Prescott Porter &amp; Porter are the ones that are filing?
Lead counsel, yes.
They're filing the amicus brief?
They're lead counsel in the case, yes. Is that what your question is? They're filing the brief.
Okay.
We are signing on. We need to be sure that you have approved them as counsel to do it for us.
And will they stay on? Are they, do they have a particular?
This is only for the brief.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Hagan, did you have anything to add? No? Okay, fantastic. Other questions, comments? Seeing none? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. That takes us to our fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget priorities. Folks in the gathering at home, this is something that we do year in and year out. We are required, per the charter, to actually have these adopted prior to October 1st, so that we can actually convey them to the administration. I like to think of them as council's kind of wish list, in that these are the things that we'd like the administration to take a look at and to potentially consider as they move forward over the next several months in crafting their recommended executive budget. I also want to state as part of the record that our expectation, as we actually received this at the end of March, is that if there are things that are not included as part of this priority list, that we get some explanation as to why those couldn't be included. I think that's the spirit of it, but I don't think that's necessarily always happened. So that is a request that I'm formally making on the record. With that being said, the way we're going to do this is I'm actually going to turn the floor over to Vice President Wood. She will, you have the priorities in front of you. Each one of our committees has worked quite a bit on budget priorities specific to those committees. We also have a number of items that are under our Committee of the Whole, sorry, list of budget priorities that were forwarded to our office manager. We then included those in there as part of our Committee of the Whole budget priorities. And so what I'm going to have Vice President Wood do is actually just move the budget priorities as they are presented in your packets. And then what we'll do is we'll open it up for discussion, potential amendments, and then what we'll do is consider the motion and potentially an amended motion for approval. All right. So with that, Vice President Wood?
Thank you, President Hussein. As part of moving the information in front of us, I would encourage counsel to go to Page 3, under the Ways and Means, where it says, "Meeting September 26, 4 p.m. to be finalized." That would be removed from the document. Further down, the Ad-Hoc Committee on Residential Residence Safety, there is also a caveat there, "Meeting September 26, 2022." That would be removed. On Page 4, halfway down, that talks about the Ad-Hoc Committee, there is also another section that says, in quote, in parentheses, "Meeting September 26, 2022, 4 p.m." With those items taken out, I would move the document before us.
All right, there is a motion on the floor. Now we'll open it up to discussion, amendments, anything of that nature. Councilman Brown?
Thank you so much, Council President. This has been an eye-opening experience, and I've just been very encouraged by everybody's input in us going through this process collectively as a team. I just was able to meet with the Lansing Economic Development Corporation, and I was very impressed with the vision that they have going forward. So I didn't know if it was appropriate. I would like to recommend maybe from 300 to 600 versus 500, based on the conversations that I had today on Page 2.
What item number?
Item number 10.
All right, so that's an official motion?
Yes.
All right. And let me explain that real quickly, because that is something that I brought. So when we had our chief strategy officer in, we asked, and that's Shelby Frair, we asked Shelby Frair toward the end of the meeting, it was actually Vice President Wood, if there were things that she thought we needed to be considering as it pertained to our budget priorities. And she specifically said that we need to do something to enhance our Economic Development Corporation. In her exact words, where we need to start putting our money where our mouths are. And so I did get with, you know, folks in terms of what we are funding right now. Right now, what we have as part of the LEDC is we do have a position for president and CEO. We have a position for vice president. We have a position for office and finance manager. And then we have two positions, one for commercial corridor development specialist, and one for economic development specialist. As I looked at that, and I, you know, obviously thought about the charge of economic development, and the fact that we have long talked about, we need a shop essentially that can actually get out and market the city, but also support intensively some of our small businesses. And I think, you know, the lack of support for our small businesses, particularly outside of the historic core, was really highlighted by the pandemic. As we, as an example, doled out grant after grant after grant, as we went out there as council members and we talked to those folks, it was clear, you know, they don't necessarily always have the channels to navigate that have been laid out for them, number one. Number two, they don't always have necessarily the technical support to actually apply for those. And then there's, of course, a host of other issues that are really challenging in terms of them remaining viable. And so my idea was that we add $200,000. But the motion right now on the floor is to amend that and add an additional $300,000 to actually increase, because we are actually providing some $300,000 to EDC right now. And the idea would be to add some very specific positions. One would be Marketing and Communications Director. The second would be a Small Business Development Specialist, which I believe is sorely needed, and as well as the Director of Equitable Economic Development. Again, that's, I think, all of those positions are something that we have talked about over the last several years. We simply, for whatever reason, haven't necessarily prioritized that at this day. Because I think we're uniquely positioned to do that now, that the EDC has essentially been brought back in-house. Okay. So what I'm hearing is there's a motion to actually increase that by 100,000. So what we're looking at is adding $300,000 to the $300,000 we already provided to the LEDC for a total of $600,000. Is there further discussion on that motion? Vice President Wood?
And I don't think we can answer this question here, but I'm going to still throw it out. Part of having them back in-house is the fact that the money that they receive from administering the different projects will now come back to them instead of going into LEAP. We have no idea how much that is and how they're reinvesting that. You know, I wouldn't be opposed to adding the additional 100,000, but I would like to see in the future that we have additional information as to how they're dealing with those additional funds.
Okay. Yeah, that's fair. First, Councilwoman Spitzley, then Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, one of the things that concerns me is, you know, when we were talking about earlier about ARPA dollars and the proposal, and I think that's gone, but I, you know, how do we, how is this going to be sustaining? How is this going to sustain itself, these dollars? And I think it's the same, kind of the same thing that Councilmember, that Vice President Wood is talking about. So my concern is, you know, how do we sustain these additional positions? I'm not saying that they're not needed. I'm just, I'm just concerned that we're adding these positions, and, you know, I'm not quite sure we can afford them.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Council President. And to Councilwoman Wood's point, in conversation with a few of the administration, as well as the LEDC, they indicated in the past that there was a council president on their board, or a council person present on their board to make sure that, you know, there was an open line of communication in what was going on with the investments and what was taking place as far as economic development in the city. You know, there was that open bridge of communication. So I would like to, you know, share that and maybe encourage that opportunity for us as well, if that's possible, as we go forward.
All right. Further questions? Councilman Jackson?
Not so much a question, but a comment. For this particular priority, I'm not necessarily for or against it, but I'll just note that we had LEAP a little while ago, who had its own thing, where their task and job was to take care of Lansing and the area. And then we took it in-house, and we were expecting some of the money that we paid LEAP to come in-house. So it's kind of like, we're just taking it in. And then now we're adding possibly positions and more money, which is an important job, but I guess we would want to see how different the results are from what LEAP did to what our in-house people do. It might be too soon to tell, but it sounds like we're going to be putting more money into it before we know about these results. So I'm just a little cautious that we're talking about positions, because we've talked about positions in a lot of areas. So now we got something kind of new, because we had it out of house, bring it in-house, and then add into it. So I'm just a little concerned, and that's all.
Councilwoman Spitzley, sorry.
I'm going to move that we remove item 10.
Yeah, we, so we have, we actually have a motion out of the table. So we'll consider that motion first, and then we can consider your motion. The only thing I'd say is, real quick, before I turn the floor to Vice President Wood, is that when we brought, when we brought the LEDC in-house, it was, there was a clear understanding as to why we were doing that. The reality is, when those folks were over with LEAP, although the idea was that they were going to be working city on Lansing issues 100% of the time, that's certainly not what happened, right? They were being pulled, and they were being pulled often. Putting that aside, when we decided to bring LEDC in-house, I remember when we actually had Carl Dorsheimer in to talk about that. And he had actually spoken at that time that his hope would be, in the future, to actually expand the number of positions that could hire for, now that they were 100% focused on the City of Lansing. Anybody at this table that has worked with the LEDC and tried to get the type of support that our businesses need out in our community, that our property owners need out in our community, even when you look at just unapologetic and relentless advocacy for our city, trying to bring in, as an example, new investments, new residents, you know that they are stretched incredibly thin. I mean incredibly thin. If you look at similarly sized cities, such as ourselves, that have general fund budgets that are similar to ours, they are outdoing us three and four to one, right? And the reason is, is that they are, as Shelby so, you know, so put it, they're putting their mouths where their money is, I'm sorry, their money where their mouths are. And so for me, I think, I think it's sorely needed. When you talk about, you know, you talk about blight elimination, you talk about housing, you talk about jobs, you talk about economic opportunity, you talk about, the list goes on and on. It starts and really ends a lot of times with economic development. And so frankly, I think our EDC has a skeleton crew. I understand that we're already supporting them at 300,000. There are communities that are similarly sized to ours with a similar budget, and they're well over a million. And so what I'm looking at, what I was originally looking at was an additional 200,000, because in talking to folks as an example with our economic development team, my understanding is that 200,000 would cover these three, what I think are sorely needed positions. But, but again, you know, we all have a vote, and exercise it as you see fit. Councilman Brown? Did you, oh, I'm sorry. Did you have anything else to add, or no? Okay. Councilwoman Wood?
Thank you, President Hussein. I think we have to go back to the first explanation of where we were. Again, this is a wish list. We are not creating a position. We're not doing any of those things. We're talking about what we believe some of our priorities are, that are passed on to the mayor to look at, and then determine based on what our revenue is, what's happening with EDC, whether this can be funded or not, first of all. Second of all, having lived through the original EDC, then LEAP, and now back to EDC again, I will tell you, the staff that what they had before is nothing like what they've got now. They had a lot more people when they were just looking at it as far as under the umbrella of our EDC. So, in order to accomplish some of these things, I think they are going to have to look at staff. I think the other thing, though, as I mentioned earlier, I'd really want to know, as we move forward, some of these fees and things that they're getting as part of the administrative cost for doing brownfields and opas and all of those things are run through EDC. There's a, there's a portion of that. Would like to know what that is. And again, some of these contracts, again, were approved when they were still part of LEAP. So does LEAP still get some of those, you know, returns? I mean, we don't have those, we don't have some of those answers. But I appreciate the spirit of this and what you're looking for. I think that, as you indicated, one of the things that I've heard over and over again, I guess, from small businesses, is wanting to have some of that personalized help, that they haven't, they haven't known where to go to get it. And having our own EDC that's looking at that, and hopefully, you know, one of the things that we stressed over and over, it can't just be in downtown. It's got to be throughout the entire city. So, that's my comments. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Spitzley?
And I'll be brief. You know, we did have a business ombudsman at one point here in the City of Lansing, so I'll leave it there. But the other thing is, you know, I do, I also am sympathetic. I mean, I do economic development in my day job, but I'm also, I'm concerned about, you know, return on investment and how much it's going to cost. And so, if we got a presentation by the EDC of, this is how much money, so if budget time comes around, and they want to add budget, I just, for me, I can't support putting it as a council priority. If they want to come and give a presentation about why the EDC needs extra, you know, employees and extra funding, I'm all for it. But at this point, I don't know. I don't know how they're going to sustain it, and so I can't in good conscience support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments, questions? All right, seeing none. There is a motion on the floor to increase that dollar amount that is outlined in number 10 to $300,000. So with that being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Do we have any other, I believe, actually, we have another motion from Councilwoman Spitzley?
I would like to amend item 10 to discuss, you know, to have the LEDC come and discuss a return on investment and how they're going to and how they're going to pay for this. You know, before we just arbitrarily, in our budget priorities, say we want to increase it from 300,000 to 500,000, if we could put some, some sort of language in there about a presentation on how it's going to be funded, you know, what their fun, what their goals and priorities are, I would appreciate that. I know that's not in writing, but that's, I would like to add some sort of discussion on, you know, how they're going to pay for this in there.
Okay, so, sorry.
So I'm, I, I, I gotta put my glasses on, but I got you.
All right.
Yeah. So desired positions to be funded would be as follows, you know, a presentation by the, and then a desired positions to be funded would be as follows, Marketing Communications Director, Small Business Development Specialist, Director of Equitable Economic Development, period. Lansing EDC would provide documentation on how they are going to pay for these positions during the 2024 budget presentation. It's 2024, right?
2023, 2024, yeah.
Yes.
All right. Just so we're clear, in terms of what we're voting on as an amendment, Sherry, could you please just read that real quick? I saw you wrote it down. Thank you.
At the end of item number 10, we will add, Lansing EDC would provide documentation on how they plan to, how they plan to pay for these changes in the 2023, 2024 budget.
I'm good with that.
All right. City Attorney Samirko?
Is it your intent that item 10 is subject to that being done to the satisfaction of counsel?
No, I, I, no.
Because if you did, you should put provided, however, the above.
I'm not going to go, we've got eight people on board. I just want to, I just want some sort of presentation on how they're going to sustain the department, how they're going to pay for those additional positions.
Okay. All right, so there's a motion on the floor pertaining to documentation and rationale from the LEDC. Further comment? All right, hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right. Do we have any other amendments or discussion items before we turn the floor back over to Vice President Wood? Councilman Jackson?
Well, you mentioned discussion for this. Were you going to turn it over for a vote to pass this?
Yes.
Okay. So just a couple of things. I just want to point, basically, number eight and nine are probably the two that I would be most in support of. And again, there's so many priorities on here. Not all of them I'm like, gung ho about, but I'm still in the nature of this exercise, okay with voting for them, just like the first two. But especially the increasing transparency section, it's, to me, it's been clear that a lot of people in the city want to have the ability to participate without having to physically drive and come into this room. And I know that we're making progress, and I know that we've talked about a lot, and we even had a resolution that was pooled. I'm not sure what happened to it. But basically, if anybody has any free time, please either YouTube or go into any one of our courts in this county, especially, for example, Judge Aquilina's courtroom. They literally have people participating on the same matter from right there at the podium, and people literally talking about it, like, making a victim impact statement, where the person would come on and say, this is how I was affected by this, which is part of the record. So they are definitely doing a hybrid. We can definitely do it, too. And I think we should not only look at streaming it for people, but allowing the ability for people to make a comment. Now, whether those comments make it into the official notes or records, I think it can, or not, but at least to allow people to make comments. I think we're afraid sometimes of the potential of out-of-staters or out-of-city-ers coming to talk about how we do our local business. I think that that fear is unfounded, because I can't imagine that so many times, and for so many outsiders are going to come in the numbers to disrupt our meeting to the point where it's like, we shouldn't have done that. We got 50 people from Grand Rapids talking about Lansing. I'd be surprised if anybody from out of state comes to troll us or whatever. But at the same time, they would be able to speak if they came in person, so it's not like they couldn't speak anyway. And by not, you know, doing whatever we can on number nine, I just think it leaves a bad impression, because we're all about transparency and accessibility and all that, and that's what number nine talks about. And number eight, because I said I had two things, the Sustainability Manager Assistant, you all recall Sustainability Manager conversation, I think it was 2019, the needs, the wants? The needs, the wants, the reasons. Well, we've, we've had Lori Welsh come into Equity Diversity and Inclusion Committee this year and explain about how things are going, where she's at, and what she needs. And she specifically said she needs some help by the way of an assistant, and we should consider helping granting that for the mayor through us because we all believe in sustainability, we all want to see our environment improved. But we also know that there are savings to be had. We all saw the press release that, you know, our Johnson Controls and everything that we do as far as efficiency, energy efficiency and all these things are going to save the city millions of dollars. I swear I read that right, did you guys see that? At least, it was at least a million. So, and also, if the federal government does anything about climate change and sustainability and working with local governments, who do you think from our city is going to be the one implementing whatever the feds do? It's going to be our sustainability manager and her assistant. And she asked for it, so I'll definitely be supporting that one really hard when it comes around, and I hope it gets added. Both of those, thank you.
All right, I appreciate those comments. Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Council President. I would ask to amend number, item seven. I think with looking at our now having in-house economic development, working with the small business and all that, it would kind of be a replication versus financial, Office of Financial Empowerment, which historically has worked with individuals and financial counseling.
All right, so the motion would be then to strike number seven?
Yes.
Committee of the Whole Priorities? All right, there's a motion on the floor for the discussion. And again, this is to strike number seven under Committee of the Whole Priorities. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. All right, do we have any others? All right, seeing none, just very quickly, I appreciate Councilman Jackson, your, your comments. I did tell Councilmember Daniels that I would speak very, very quickly to number nine. Of course, he apologized for not being able to be here. And he simply stated that he believed that the language in here was all encompassing, that it would, you know, kind of, kind of help the administration, the city council, keep a focus on transparency. I believe that, you know, although we've had some success moving the dial, again, with this language is all encompassing, and then it really could potentially spur us to do more. And so he felt that the, bringing the resolution tonight wasn't necessary because he felt that that would be redundant. But he did ask folks that if they had any questions for him, to please give him a call. All right. So with that being said, we do have a series of amendments to Councilwoman Woods, Vice President Wood's motion. And so with that being said, further discussion? Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Something you said made me think about it. So, you know, there was a resolution, and it might be redundant. But at the same time, you know, we do resolutions on so many things that we don't even really have any touch over. For example, the, what is it, the 1931 thing? That's, you know, that's the legislature. So, you know, I would like to see councils push that resolution forward so that we can make it even more official, that that's what we're, that was what we want and what we go for. So I don't know where it went, but I'll talk to Councilman Daniels to see if we can get it back up so that we can get that official document that says we care, like we've done with so many other things.
Okay. All right, with that being said, and with no other further questions or comments, all those in favor of the amended motion from Vice President Wood signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. And that takes us to our last agenda item, which is closed session. Vice President Wood.
Thank you, President Hussein. Pursuant to MCL 15.268E, I hereby move that we recess into closed session to consult with the city attorney in connection with the following specific spending, pending litigation. An open meeting would be deterrent financially effect on the litigation or settlement position of the city attorney concerning these cases. And it would include having Mark Lawrence from the mayor's office and Jane Dece, Deceased, Dissed, I'm sorry, Jane.
It's okay. Dissessa.
Dissessa. Into the meeting as well. If the clerk would please read the cases into the record.
Atkinson et al. v. City of Lansing et al. Burwell v. City of Lansing et al. Career Quest Learning Centers Inc. and Little Rainbows LLC v. Lansing City Treasurer et al. Charter Township of Lansing v. Barb Byram, Ingham County Clerk and City of Lansing. Chen v. City of Lansing et al. City of Lansing v. Vade Inc. et al. City of Lansing v. OCOF Nonprofit Housing Corporation. City of Lansing et al. v. Purdue Pharma et al. Opioid Litigation. Fire Farm LLC v. City of Lansing. Freeman v. City of Lansing. Funches v. City of Lansing et al. Hardy v. City of Lansing et al. Hulan v. City of Lansing et al. Lynn v. City of Lansing. OPV Partners LLC and Resco LLC v. City of Lansing. Phillips v. City of Lansing et al. Stafford v. Klein and City of Lansing and United States of America v. City of Lansing.
All right, there is a motion on the floor for the discussion. Seeing and hearing none, Clerk Bolt, would you please take the roll?
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson? Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Spataford? Councilmember Spitzley? Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Motion carries, six one.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go ahead and reconvene the Committee of the Whole Meeting for September 26th. Is there any other business before the body? Seeing, seeing and hearing none, we are adjourned at, what is it, 6:35?